Welcome to the County Planning Commission Meeting of July 22, 2024. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on August 6, 2024, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the back of the room. If you fill one out, please bring it up to Jeri and she'll get it to me. Our first item is roll call. Everyone's present. Next item is approval of the July 8, 2024 minutes. Has everyone reviewed the July 8 minutes?
Mr. Chair, move to approve minutes of July 8, 2024.
I got it.
Madam Chairman, there is an error on page 11, I believe, and its condition number three was Xed, so it shouldn't be in there.
Oh, shouldn't be in there.
I believe that's correct. I'll run that. I was, I meant to ask Jeri and didn't get it done, I'm sorry. That was taken out by the motion to approve.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the July 8, 2024 minutes as corrected. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The Chair would address a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Discussion from the audience, from the Commission. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next is consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items on this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number four is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 9553, for heavy constructors, to review a solid waste disposal site in an agriculture district, and staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 9553, as it is located inside the city limits of Rapid City. Item number five is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 1737, for Kandanki, to review the use of a camper as a temporary living quarters in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 1737, with conditions. Item number six is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 1824, for Plainsview Mobile Manor, to review an existing mobile home park in suburban residential district, and staff recommends to continue Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 1824, to the August 26, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Item number seven is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 2324, for Walter and Barbara Dingman. John Dingman is the agent to review an accessory dwelling unit in agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 2324, with conditions. Item number eight is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 24-0010, for RFL Holdings LLC, Ryan Remington, to review a vacation home rental in agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 24-0010, with conditions. Item number nine is Planning Unit Development Overlay Review, PUR 22-05, for River Country Limited Partnership, Angela Lidle, to review Planning Unit Development Overlay to allow a recreational resort in agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of Planning Unit Development Overlay Review, PUR 22-05, with conditions. Item number 10 is Planning Unit Development Overlay Review, PUR 23-06, for Horse Creek LLC, to review a recreational resort in commercial district, and staff recommends approval of Planning Unit Development Overlay Review, PUR 23-06, with conditions. Item number 11 is Mining Permit Review, NPR 14-03, for Pennington County Highway, to review the extraction of gravel to be crushed to specifications into stockpile in agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of Mining Permit Review, NPR 14-03, with conditions. And finally, item 12 is Mining Permit Review, NPR 14-04, for Pennington County Highway, to review excavating and extracting gravel for road surfacing in agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of Mining Permit Review, NPR 14-04, with conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. Would staff like any items removed from the consent agenda?
No, not at this time.
Would the Planning Commission like any items removed from the consent agenda? Would any audience member like an item removed from the consent agenda? Okay. I would address the motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Karen? And Michael? It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Any discussion on that item, on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. All right, we're on item 13. Did you want to?
No.
Okay.
Item number 13 is Conditional Use Permit, COCU 24-0022, for Yarotech LLC. Mark Tippett is the agent, is to allow utility-scale solar energy system in agriculture district. And this request is located on the Cheyenne River Ranch LLC. It's located northeast of 16427 East Highway 44. It's open prairie, rolling hills. There is special flood hazard area on this property. The access will be through private access easements and section line right-of-ways to be named. There is approximately 1,100 acres, with the footprint of this at 324 acres. And actually, the agent is here to do a pretty extensive presentation, so I will let him do that, and then if there's any questions from staff. At this time, staff did recommend approval, however, there was a request to continue it to the August 12th or 26th meeting, and that will be up to us after the testimony.
Excuse me, Brittany, was, what was the meeting date?
August 12th or August 26th.
Okay. 12th or 26th. And then I have one more question for you. A number of the folks that have showed up want to make sure that they're capable of receiving the copies of what we're receiving here, as well as any new submissions, and I promised them I'd let you know, and that there is a procedure for doing that.
Correct. They can either contact our office, they can contact plz@penco.org, or they can look on our planning website under the Planning Commission meeting dates, the packets there unfold.
And that is under the Pennington County website, is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks, Brittany.
Thank you. Michael, do you want to combine?
Yes. Madam Chair, I would like to combine item number 13 and 14 for purposes of discussion, but we will vote on them separately.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to combine 13 and 14 for the purposes of discussion. Any further discussion on this item?
I'll second it. Did somebody second?
We had a second, yeah.
You got a second? Yes, I think it's an excellent idea, so that our introductory party doesn't have to go through things twice as well. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good morning. And I apologize to those of you, it's a little bit of an awkward, awkward sort of situation, but I'd like to address the Commission. I want to thank Brittany and Jason for their guidance, and other people that I've had the privilege of meeting. I'm not Mark Tippett. My name is Lyon Roth. I'm actually the Chairman of Yarotech and a co-founder. Mark and I have been here before a few times, but this time he couldn't make it. As some of you may have heard, there have been some travel glitches across the United States. Both of us were affected, but he was affected more dispositively. So hopefully next time you'll get to hear from him as well.
Could I get you to repeat your name again?
Sure. My name is Lyon, L-Y-O-N. My last name is Roth, R-O-T-H.
Okay. Thank you.
I live in South Florida, but I feel like I've been coming to South Dakota a little bit, and actually, the owner of the land is, well, not a neighbor, he lives one town over in South Florida, and has been investing in multiple capacities in the neighborhood for several years, including the Cheyenne River property. I'm going to talk a little bit more about Yarotech. I co-founded Yarotech in 2009 as a solar and storage company. We cut our teeth initially in Puerto Rico, because quite frankly, the cost of electricity there was prohibitive, and almost all of their power was being generated by burning fossil fuels, either coal or even oil, and a little bit of natural gas. We're still active in Puerto Rico. We've focused most of our development recently in Carolinas, North and South Carolina. We've got a couple of projects in Ohio, and a couple of projects in Virginia. This hopefully would be our first project in South Dakota. To give you a little bit of background on Yarotech, we focused to date on photovoltaic, this will be a hybrid, I see, you can see the slides, of wind and solar. You see that the states that I mentioned, we have one project in Texas as well, is really almost all solar-focused. But this will be a wind, solar, it'll be mostly solar with a little bit of wind. I think the actual project size will be scoped, you'll see in the slides, at 143, 142.8 megawatts of power, 50-some out of that coming from wind, and close to 90 megawatts coming from solar. So we've developed, built, owned, and operated power plants now for 14 years, and here, in the, you know, project development and management skills, we've done some pretty extensive engineering studies. As Charlie mentioned, we don't have to say this twice, we're happy to say it as often as possible, but we're pretty proud of the work that we've done on all of our projects, but specifically here, in advance of asking the Commission to consider a conditional use permit, and I think you'll certainly please ask any questions, but I think, hopefully you'll recognize that there is a lot of thought before we came to visit with you. So the location is, this map might be a little bit hard to read, but you guys know the territory better than I do. So the site is approximately 15 miles southeast of where we are, in Pennington County, and you can see the checkmarks, so we have full site control, we've done title searches, a photovoltaic engineering layout, a, you know, engineering stamped, single-line drawing approved, EPC is engineering procurement and construction, we're not a construction company, but we've, you know, we've cost estimated the project. The PB System 8760 hourly output report is interesting. That basically indicates how much sun we get. So people have license plates in Florida, the Sunshine State. South Dakota's pretty close, because we, you know, we're in, close to the tropics, it's cloudy. It's not nearly as sunny in Florida as people think. 8760 is the number of hours you have in a year, so you measure solar compatibility based on how many of those hours you have direct sunlight coming down on panels, and, you know, Florida's in like the mid-2000s, and South Dakota's in the low 2000s, so it's a lot closer than people would think. And obviously, we have a financial model, and right now, we're at the permitting phase, and you'll see some topographical studies and some injection studies that we've done, but now we're here in front of you to discuss a conditional use permit. The 200-megawatt AC, that's sort of the maximum that we can build, the design that we have, the preliminary draft design we've been working with, as I mentioned earlier, is a little bit more modest than that, at just under 143 megawatts, but you'll see that in a second here. Again, I'm not expecting everybody, I can't frankly even read the writing, I mean, I know what's there, but the kind of area that's a little gray on the outer band is where the wind turbines will be. We'll have about 10 wind turbines generating 52 megawatts, and the shaded kind of pink area is where the solar panels will be. You do see, as Brittany mentioned, there is, there are a couple of ponds and some water regress, but all that's been looked at pretty carefully, and obviously, none of this could go forward unless all the environmental studies and other, you know, stormwater studies are approved. So this is the site plan, this is just another rendering of what you saw in the previous slide, and this is on the wind component, so I talked a little bit about the sun component. At first, when Adam, who owns the Cheyenne River Ranch, talked to me about, Adam Henry talked to me about doing solar, I was a little skeptical, and then I found out that there actually is a fairly impressive solar power plant, just, I mean, it's not that close, but it's further east of where we're proposing our project. But we did a wind study, and as you can imagine, and, you know, even in the state, we have hundreds of megawatts of wind generation already in various parts of South Dakota. This will be more modest, but the wind, the wind production factor here is extremely felicitous. It's a great, great place to do wind. This is the professional engineer-stamped, single-line diagram, so again, this is sort of where the inverters would go, where the transformers would go, what the voltage connection is, you know, what the ratios are, and to the comment that other people here would like to see, obviously, that's up to you, what you want to distribute and to whom, but we're very comfortable, frankly, we're very proud of what's in these slides. This is the transmission injection study, and I'm not an engineer, I studied a little bit of math and physics, but I like the green yeses, but I was a little concerned, because they're not all yeses, so what's all the other stuff? So this is what it would look like if all the power were being placed onto the, you know, the transmission line simultaneously, where would the challenges be? And if I had to summarize this in a way that's most compatible with the way I understand things, this transmission line, the voltage that we're proposing, can absorb at least three times the amount of power that we're projecting to provide, and this is our, I mean, we worked with a professional engineering firm, Timmins, they're a national firm, to do this transmission injection study, but SWPP and WAPA would have to approve this many times over before they'd allow for an interconnection. So from a sanity check, we think this checks out extremely well. From a practical standpoint, nothing would happen unless, obviously, the RTO, the Regional Transmission Operator, the, you know, SWPP and the line owner, WAPA would endorse this. One thing I want to focus on a little bit, because I think this is extremely important from a community standpoint, so I'm looking at the Commissioners, but I really feel like I'm speaking to all of you. This is not a request to take agricultural land and turn it into subdivisions or an industrial park, I mean, we know what a conditional use permit is. We have a projected life of a power project approximately 35 years, and then what happens? So, look, technology will change. I, you know, I don't know, I'll be around in 35 years from now, I hope so, but things change, it's hard to predict. I remember, you know, not to tell jokes, I remember they had this Back to the Future movie, and then they had one in 1985 where it goes forward into 2015, and they had flying cars. So we didn't have flying cars in 2015, but he stops his flying car to make, you know, to make a call from a payphone. So I can anticipate what'll happen in 35 years from now. I don't know if we'll have flying cars, I'm pretty sure we won't be using payphones. But here, what we're doing is we're providing a decommissioning plan and a decommissioning bond, so in the event that the county decides at the end of the useful life of this power plant, that the land should be restored to what it's being used for now, which is mostly grazing, or whatever the land is being used for, there are funds that are prepaid to provide for that process. And in the much larger application that we submitted to the county, we put together a 21-page report that focuses on the costs, the processes, the anticipated salvage value, but more importantly, the restoration process of everything that we're doing, both on the solar side, both on the wind side, all the inverters, all the transformers, every piece of equipment, and then, you know, what might be the, you know, the glass, the aluminum, the silicon, what might be the approximate salvage value, and then obviously, how we could dispose of things in a completely environmentally friendly way. Once again, I anticipate that, you know, you'll see on the timeline, this probably won't get built for another three or four years, so we're looking at, you know, 2065. I have no idea what the recycling technology will look like, but the funds, the anticipated funds for decommissioning, and a very detailed plan, according to what, you know, what the world understands in 2024, is all included in great detail, and it's something that we've done with every single facility that we built. The construction management plan, I think this is also extremely important. I know that there were some issues with the other solar power plant, with some mud, and there were some discussions, and some warnings, and compliance ultimately hopefully was obtained, but we're, you know, first of all, we're experienced. The times here that we outlined were based on discussions in terms of what we understand is common and accepted in the county. We, you know, we plan to coordinate everything with all the stakeholders, to make sure there's no disruption. Again, felicitously, just to give you a sense, everything is offset by at least 1,000 feet, so that's more than three football fields, to give you some context. There isn't another building for, you know, half a mile. The closest one is actually the home that the landowner has, so in the sense of people being disrupted in their daily lives through the construction process, I don't anticipate much of that. But obviously, you know, there's a road, you'll see, there's a dirt road, 164th Avenue, that goes up from Route 44, the map looks a couple of slides down from here, but we certainly plan to take instruction regarding all the things that are necessary to ensure this process is as seamless and as non-disruptive as possible. So frankly, in a way, we're, for many reasons, we're glad that there's a precedent, and there's some lessons to be learned, and we plan to listen attentively and comply completely with those lessons. So again, this is detailed, for those of you who are interested, and I see by the attendance that some of you will be, you know, the lighting, the mitigation of dust and dirt, and obviously site security, a limitation when driving of posts can take place. Again, there's a noise consideration, but like I said, there isn't anybody anywhere near, you'll see from the map, just to put this in context, as Brittany laid out, so the plan itself is to use about 1,100 of the 20,000-plus, 20-plus-thousand acres of the Cheyenne River Ranch, but even among those 1,100 acres, there are only about 330, 340 of which, where we're actually going to be placing panels and turbines. The setbacks and visual barriers are important, so again, I can't argue with anybody's sense of aesthetics. I remember when panels and turbines were thought to be really cool, and if you wanted to show modern life and how we're going into the 21st century, they were often used as visuals, but some people would prefer to look at prairie or corn, and that's fine. There will be, there'll obviously be setbacks in complete compliance with the county zoning ordinances, and if anything, based on the design plan, we're going to be well in excess of all the minimum setbacks, whether it's from wetlands, or from adjacent land, or from natural vegetation. The Impatare project will be surrounded by an eight-foot security fence, so that's good. This is a map where others here in the audience could probably have, you know, more familiarity with, as I mentioned, this purple line here at the bottom is Route 44. I can't see it either, but I'll put the slides together. This is 164th Avenue, it's a dirt road that will feed in, and that's, you know, that's where we want to be, you know, make sure that during the construction phase, that trucks coming in and out carrying equipment aren't putting unnecessary mud onto roads that other people are going to be traveling on. Stormwater and erosion, this is critical. This is not just a county issue, this is a state issue. And, you know, we're blessed to have a cadre of expert advisors on the engineering side, on the legal side, on the financial side, that will give us guidance regarding compliance with, I mean, I don't need to read this, but the most recent version of the South Dakota Erosion and Sediment Controls. Again, these have to go through a pretty rigorous third-party review. You know, topsoil from the site should be maintained on the site, you know, any grading should be minimal, there'll be some, but the good news is, and it's one of the reasons we considered, the combination of the wind and the solar, there's an area that's pretty flat and very friendly for solar, there's an area that's a little lumpy, and that's where we're going to have the wind, that'll mitigate any grading that's necessary, and obviously, all the drainage and stormwater issues are going to be in complete compliance, you can see here. Again, it's hard to see, but these blue lines are, you know, drainage facilities to make sure that water does not accumulate. Look, I think there are lots of benefits to this. I mean, this isn't in the slide, it's in the larger package that we provided to the county. There's likely to be an increase in tax revenue. One of the things that this project will do will enhance the value of the land, there'll be a revenue stream, and there'll be a tax associated with that, but there'll also be a lot more power that's being generated locally. And, you know, kudos to everybody here, I understand that the Ellsworth Air Force Base will be getting the B-21 bomber, and that'll, again, depending on, I mean, some of you probably know the numbers better than I do, but I've read numbers between 8,000 to 18,000 additional personnel associated with that project, not just military personnel, but there are spouses, significant others, and others who are, you know, part of that. The amount of power generated by this project in its current design is about 275 kilowatt-hours per year, so if you think about an average home requiring about 3,000 kilowatt-hours a month, or 36,000 kilowatt-hours a year, it's approximately 8,000 homes. So, I mean, this wasn't why we sized it this way, but felicitously, it kind of is approximately the anticipated increase in population, but hopefully, you know, with that and other things that are happening, one of the many pleasant experiences that I've had over the past two and a half, almost three years that we've been focused on this, is getting to visit here, learn a little bit about what a, you know, positive growth area part of the country this is, and obviously, it'd be a treat to be part of that. This is the timeline, so we secured site control in 2022. Normally, that would mean sitting down, in most cases, with a farmer and her family, his family, and understand why they're interested, and maybe having their land used for another purpose. In this case, as I mentioned, I know Adam and his colleagues from living together in South Florida. We went through the preliminary engineering through last year, so some, what you saw here is sort of a distillation of the 80-page-plus report that we provided to the county, and now we're here. And there's overlap, obviously, between the conditional use permitting and the interconnection study. The interconnection slide and the backup material is the investment that we made in order to speak intelligently and get a sanity check, whether it makes sense to go forward, and whether the voltage and capacity and proximity of the substation transmission lines are all compatible with what we're hoping to do, and they are. The rest of this is an investment that we're going to be making, again, together with SWPP, and that's going to be a much, much more, you know, much, much more massive undertaking. And if that all, you know, ideally, if we pass through this phase, then we'll invest meaningfully in this phase, and notice to proceed essentially means that we're able to get our construction firm, give them the green light to go ahead, and our expectation is that this, if, again, it complies with the preferences and approvals of the county, will begin in complete construction in 2028. This could be moved up a year, if the notice of proceed takes place early in 2027, but we want it to be a little bit conservative in our projections. As I mentioned, we anticipate increased tax revenues, and obviously, schools, emergency services, internet, all the many important public services. services, internet, all the many important public services that you provide to the community will be there, partially funded by the increased tax revenue. And, look, the reason I co-founded this business was because, I mean, back in 2009, America wasn't energy independent yet. We were importing hundreds of billions of dollars of oil, and we were essentially exporting hundreds of billions of dollars abroad. Our situation has become better. A lot of it has to do with natural gas and fracking, but a lot of it has to do with clean energy. And clean energy has to also benefit of frankly being clean. You all live in a very nice state. The air is clean, it's pleasant to walk around, and having more renewable, reliable, predictable electricity within the community, I think, is a major benefit, aside from the financial benefits, in addition to the financial benefits. And I went through the decommissioning process pretty quickly, but I think we've spent at least as much time on that as anything else in anticipation of this presentation. Because from a peace of mind standpoint, if part of your purpose is to make sure that we don't make mistakes that'll hamstring future generations, the same way, obviously, your predecessors were equally responsible, this is all reversible. We believe that ideally, this will be good and people will like it. And then we'll use the technology of the 2050s and 2060s, whatever that may be, to make this more robust and more efficient. There'll be more people and more industry and more business that it'll continue to attract. But if those things don't happen and this winds up being something that, you know, while it was done, but maybe it could have been done differently, then the good news is that unlike an industrial park, unlike subdivisions, all of this not only can be restored, but the costs associated with the restoration will be provided for in advance. So I'm expecting that there's some questions from a procedural standpoint. I'm happy to answer them if you want to put them to me, if I took them from here, I guess from the commissioners first. I'm excited to be here. Like I said, Mark couldn't make it. It was quite a process to show up, but well worth it. I really enjoy coming here. I sat in on a commission meeting a couple of months ago just to get a sense of how the process works and how the people interact. And I'm proud to be here at the lectern this morning. Thank you for your time.
Adam, Chair.
Yes.
You know, the question I have, once this is developed, if it gets developed, is it going to be taxed under a utility? Instead of property tax, will it be taxed as a utility in the state of South Dakota?
So it's an excellent question. I'm not sure. I don't know what the difference is, but I do know that in pretty much all cases, the county does have a, this, I mean, look, if it's bought by the utility, then maybe, but a privately-generated power plant is, in all cases that I'm familiar with, and certainly the cases that we're operating them, the county gets its fair share of the tax revenues.
I think some of our utilities would be taxed under PILT payment and lieu taxes opposed to real estate tax. That was just a question I had relative to the, if this is going to be utility, if it would be taxed under the PILT program. And then the life expectancy, if we looked, if we did the research on these turbines and the solar panels, the life expectancy is 35 years, or would they have to be replaced during that 35 years at some point?
So it's an excellent question. Some panels usually do need to be replaced, depending on where you are. So I mentioned Puerto Rico. We had some high-profile hurricanes there, one in particular, Maria, where we weren't in the eye of the storm, but there was, there were a few panels that were destroyed. There was an inverter that needed to be replaced. There was some panel degradation because of the winds and the storms. So we anticipate that some of those panels will have a shorter lifespan perhaps than had they not been impacted. But the turbines are extremely resilient, so if anything, they just get taller and taller. We'll be using state-of-the-art turbines as where we're in right now, 2027, whenever the final design is presented. But solar panels, even solar panels from the 1990s are still existing and producing power. They're just producing power with much less capacity. So turbines, it's really just how long the turbine is. And there, you can just think about the leverage you're getting because of the length of the, you know, the span of the turbine. Solar, there's a production factor, and there are a lot of experts in material sciences. Even in the 15 years that we've been in the business, panel prices have come down close to 90%, and production capacity has multiplied by three.
So in year 35, if it's decommissioned, the estimated salvage value is $8,912,403. So you're saying in 35 years, that where's the, I'm trying to figure out where the salvage value is with these solar panels and wind turbines and after, hypothetically, after 35 years old, what is the salvage of the metal or the copper?
So that's a great point, and that's in the larger presentation that we gave to the county. So those are based on 2024 numbers. And there are two costs. There's the recycling and decommissioning costs, the stuff that needs to, whatever needs to get rid of, you get rid of. But for example, right now, if you take apart the silicon, a lot of it can be repurposed. So I talked about the 1990 panels from 30 years ago. If you were going to make new panels, there's some stuff, filaments, glass, silicon, that can be redeployed, but just designed differently so that the production capacity is higher than it was when they were first deployed. The, you know, the turbines are substantial. You have aluminum fiberglass, you have pretty impressive structures that have significant salvage value at a cost. So what the Timmins report that you were referring to reflects is that these are 2024 numbers, NPV, net present value. There will be probably more inflation than deflation, but the expectation is that the inflation that will impact the costs of decommissioning and recycling and salvaging will be a similar inflation, whatever that is, 2%, 3%, 1%, that will bump up the value of things that can be redeployed.
And then, once this is developed, would there be somebody on-site or somebody in Rapid City in office?
Yes.
I'm assuming, and there's a lot of infrastructure there, so it's got to be looked at on a continuous basis and monitored and repaired and whatnot?
Yes, that's an excellent question. So one of the components of renewable power plants is the operating expenses are a fraction of a conventional power plant, but they are. The two biggest are supervision and security. So this, I don't want to point fingers at Puerto Rico, but I think, you know, the perimeter is secured constantly in our Puerto Rican plants, and people are driving around to make sure that no one's looting it, quite frankly. I think that's important everywhere, but that doesn't require a lot, and you could have sensors and you could figure out where there's been a breach. But there is, on the solar side, and again, it depends on where we are. So in Puerto Rico, for example, they get a lot of rain, same as in Florida. Here, we get a little less rain, so the panels here will probably have to be cleaned a little more frequently. I mean, if I didn't park my car indoors, I'd never have to get it washed on the outside because it just rains often enough that, you know, Mother Nature takes care of it. And a lot of the monitoring in terms of the production capacity, when I talked about the panel erosions, there are very sophisticated ways right now to determine whether or not the expected power or the produced power is in line with expectations, and there are people who are doing that. Will they be doing it in an office onsite, or will they be doing it here, I mean, you know what I mean, metaphorically, here and some other place? I'm not sure. But there will always be at least a couple of people onsite, especially on the security side, to accomplish point number one.
That's all I really have for now, but I think you're going to see a lot of the concern out there in the audience, it'd just be contamination, and I guess we'll get to that later, but thank you.
Okay.
Adam, Chair.
Yes.
And you don't have to answer any of these. Now, one of them is, I'm pretty sure I found it here in one of the reports, and it's hard to give you which page, so I'm going to flip it over and I'll make sure Brittany knows which page. It's on your decommissioning, there's a parentheses or a negative number on one of the things that should have been a positive number. Maybe you caught it.
I did. The second number on the wind should be, and it's felicit, I mean, coincidentally, it's just under half a million dollars of delta. One's a positive delta, the other one's a negative delta. You're absolutely right, I caught that this morning.
But the other thing, and don't answer this, but I want to, and we have, a lot of people here want to give their testimony, so I'm not going to drag you out with questions that are going to come up on a continued item. But I am concerned, like Commissioner Ross Connect is, in regards to whether the decommissioning plan, the costs that you're showing are a little too bit going, aggressive versus our remote area. They may look, we have very little recycling, we have a lot of transportation costs on everything. Even the steel price that's in here isn't very relative to what the salvage steel here would be in a decommissioning situation, though you'll have a lot more, or aluminum prices. And I think your firm needs to look at that. I think it's a little too aggressive for the local climate of what's going on. It doesn't show enough transportation costs to save some of these things. For instance, you mentioned the solar panel and the components that are in there that are now recyclable for other uses that didn't exist before. Well, you've still got to get them to a place that's going to recycle them. We, 10 years ago, we couldn't even do away with our computer equipment until Goodwill showed up. Now we have two people 10 years down the road that accept it, but we don't get a dollar for it. You have to turn it in, and they handle it from there. That's how much they're handling and transportation is. So it's a different situation in the Midwest out here being remote. And I just wanted to make sure that you knew that's one of the areas I'll be coming from in my questions on.
I appreciate that. No, it's something we want to prepare for because, again, you're obviously much more familiar with the local constraints, and you mentioned transportation and not having facilities that are for right next door. So again, I can't anticipate what the world will look like in 2055, but I will tell you that, especially now people are talking about batteries and storage, and you mentioned the computers, pretty much everything we own, everything we look at, the TVs, the, you know, all these electric vehicles that are running around, there is an enormous amount of research, and quite frankly, I think a pretty interesting opportunity, in repurposing, right? Teslas have only been on the road for, I don't know, eight or nine years, maybe 10, but there are more and more of them. I didn't see that many here, but certainly where I live. And most of the car manufacturers are coming up with EVs. What are you going to do with all the batteries? When you had the little BlackBerries and things, and people were careful, don't throw those into landfills because, so we're very much aware of that. I think that there are going to have to be more local and more sophisticated repurposing and recycling facilities within the next 35, 40 years. I'm not a futurologist, but I would certainly not think that if you fast-forward 35 years, you're going to need to take these things quite as far away as you do right now. And who knows, maybe these things can be done through all sorts of futuristic ways that we can't even get our heads around right now. But you made a great point. The analysis that we're presenting is based on what we can know in 2024, and if we're under anticipating transportation, we're going to have to, you know, we'll have to take it. So I appreciate the feedback, and we'll do some research before we come back.
Yeah, my biggest one was that, for instance, just out here, when we have technological devices that are, they age, and to get them, they become worthless because of transportation and recycling situations. So other than the precious metals, which, again, that's what Goodwill's doing, they're taking and getting the precious metals back out, but they don't give me anything for it. So if you're sitting there with a whole boatload of it, you're not going to get anything either unless there's some facility that you can put together to get it there transportation-wise. It's not going to be here.
At the scale that we're talking about, though?
Yes.
It's different than, I mean, I think your points are very well made, but we're talking about millions of dollars. So I do believe that something the size that we're discussing hopefully will benefit from.
I was talking about in relationship to the bond, you got to first.
Yeah, that's true. No, I know. I think that's right. I think that's absolutely right.
Are there other questions?
Adam, Chair.
Yes.
You're probably familiar with that 4,000-acre solar panel hailstorm that hit Texas. It's been on, this is, I don't know, within the last six months or so. We don't have hurricanes here, and we have very few tornadoes and stuff, but we do get some hail. We get a lot of hail. We get big hail. What size hail do your panels handle?
So we, you know, so we've built our facilities more in hurricane places than hail. You know, it ties into, you know, the other question about location. So when we built our facilities in Puerto Rico, mostly the attention was on making sure that the resilience of the, you know, the panels could withstand a category-three, a direct hit from a category-three hurricane. And they can't. And it was proven because that's about the intensity of the wind. Maria was category-five, but in the locations that we are, the strongest we were hit was category-three. And like I said, a few panels were blown off, we had to replace an inverter. There are different types of panels, and I do believe that there are certain panels that are made with casings that are more resilient to hail. I don't know what the damage was in the Texan case. 4,000 panels is a lot. I don't know if that's the amount that was hit or that had to be replaced. But if you're going to get, you know, these very large, rock-sized, you know, hail that bangs straight into the, you know, center of gravity of a panel, you're going to damage the panel. I mean, that's true, and then that panel will get replaced.
Now, one of the concerns at that Texas one was contamination of all of the broken panels. What type of contamination would there be from hailed-out panels? I don't know all the materials or anything, but...
So that's an excellent question. So none of the materials that we're using, like, I'm not telling anybody to sort of drink a glass of silicon, but none of these, all the environmentals, first of all, you're talking about the species that might be out there that might be affected. All of that's being really covered well in the environmental permits that need to be secured. In the preliminary study that Commissioner Johnson referred to, you know, there are monarch butterflies that are there, so we want to make sure that that's not impaired. There are all sorts of rumors that the runoff from panels then get into the water system, and frankly, that's just not true. And if we wanted to have a, you know, more robust discussion on the lack of contamination when these things take place, I'm happy to provide the commission with studies that indicate that the renewable power projects are indeed very safe. When you're talking about, let's say, I'm thinking that, so you break the panel, and then you have shards down there, and someone's got to come and clean up the shards and pick up the pieces and put on a new panel, it's not that different than if a Coke bottle or a windshield breaks. So it's unfortunate, and you want to make sure, you know, I mean, I don't, it's like if something breaks in your home, you want to make sure that it's cleaned up and completely restored to what it was, and what was broken gets replaced. But while that is happening, there is no evidence that any harm is being done to groundwater or to surface, to anything. Otherwise, we wouldn't get approval to build that. Things do break, whether it's through hailstorms or hurricanes, and I don't mean to stand up and not face the realities of these kinds of projects, but obviously, they've been battle-tested and battle-proven, and that's why frankly, they get approved. People don't want harmful elements in their counties anywhere. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
Other questions from the commission?
I have three questions.
Laura.
Sorry, I thought you recognized me. The existing facility that's east of this site, I've only glanced at it as I drive down the interstate, but it seems really big. Can you describe how your facility, which it sounds like based on your things, is going to cover about two sections, and you'll have equipment on one section of land, versus the site that's out there east of your facility?
Yeah.
I mean, every time I look at that, it's like, well, there's another row there, and then there's another row there. I mean, how big is it in comparison to that site?
It's about a third of that.
It's about a third.
It's about a third of that, yeah.
And then my second question is, Cheyenne River Ranch LLC is owned by a Florida resident? Is that correct? It's a?
I mean, I don't know the ownership of the, the, well, I do know that the owner of the land?
Uh-huh.
Has a home in Florida. I don't know if he's a South Dakota resident or, but I, I, I know him from Florida, but I know he has a home here too in Sturgis and he's here a lot.
Okay. So there's a, there's a, a resident of some state that owns Chey, that is the owner of Cheyenne River Ranch?
Yes, but I don't know if he's officially a South Dakota resident. I know he has a home in Sturgis and a home in Hollywood, Florida.
Okay. And then my third question is, um, I don't recall reading anything about the number of transmission lines that would go out of this facility if the interconnect study is successful. Can you just make a comment about like, I mean, are there gonna be transmission lines going everywhere or how would that work?
So, so there's a substation that we would be connecting to and it's about four, four and a half miles away, about seven kilometers away. And that would be, it's, you're not gonna see all these overhead transmission lines. It's a couple of cables that go, go to the substation.
So you'll have an, you'll have an underground line to the substation?
In all likelihood.
If the interconnect study is correct?
In all likelihood.
There will be no overhead transmission lines?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Very welcome.
Michael?
A couple of things. Is this being used as a carbon offset as such?
So it, I want to make sure I understand the question. There are corporations that invest in, um, renewable energy plants?
Right.
In order to have an offset from carbon that they're generating, whether it's Google, Apple, their data centers or BP and?
Yeah, and they contract with systems such as yours.
So we don't, we don't have that arrangement in place at this point.
Okay. Uh, the other one is you have multiple landowners in here. Now, are they all part of a corporation?
So no, our, our, um, our entire facility is built on one small portion of, of one, one, one parcel of land.
So it's all the Cheyenne Ranch LLC? The other ones that are shown here, Mater and the different ones, they're not part of that?
They're neighbors. They're not, they're, that's not, we're, we're on, again, we're, we're designating about eleven hundred acres of about a twenty-three thousand acre, um, facility. And, um, there are, there are a couple of neighbors, but our, our, our project, and we're also only using a fraction of the eleven hundred for the actual deployment of panels and turbines. And then, um, there are two other landowners, maybe the two that you mentioned that are proximate to that, but no, all, all, the entire facility is gonna be on one subsection of one property owner's land.
Okay. Uh, the bonding money, is this like an insurance bonding setup?
Yes, sir.
Is that what it is?
It's a surety bond. It's a, anyway.
Realistically, excuse me, when will you plug into the grid?
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Earliest will be twenty-twenty-seven, which is our hope, conservatively twenty-twenty-eight. A lot of it depends on the RTO. A lot of it depends on how long it takes Southwest, um, to, uh, the power pool to review various components that are, that, that are in its ecosystem.
Twenty-seven or twenty-eight in that area?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I got. Thank you.
Other other questions from the commission?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, this one, I'm gonna address the planning and zoning. Uh, my question for planning and zoning is how many letters were sent out on this and who were they sent to?
Um, there's the surrounding property owners. So Mr. Mater got one and Mr. Shor got one. And then the other landowner?
There's quite a few people in the audience, that's why I was wondering.
Right. Mr. Mater and Mr. Shor were the two outside of the Cheyenne River Ranch LLC.
Okay.
Okay, we have a number of?
I'd like one more question.
Okay.
Um, did you pick this site just because that you had the property here, um, or is it because we're closer to the grid? Because we're kind of the interconnect between, between the east and the west. Um, I was in Florida for Christmas and there's a lot of unused land in Florida too. Um, and you said that we get about the same amount of sunshine as what you do down there. Um, and there's a lot more people. We have more cattle in South Dakota than we do people. So I'm curious about what the selection criteria was for where you're putting this.
Okay, so it's a great question. So like, what am I doing here essentially? Um, Florida's pretty nice too. And, um, so the, the answer is that the land here actually is very compatible for a, for a hybrid wind-solar project. I was surprised by that. I, I wasn't surprised that the wind study turned out to be very favorable. And as, as you mentioned, Commissioner, there's a much larger solar facility. You won't be able to see this from the interstate. You probably wouldn't even be able to see it from Route forty-four, but, um, but the, the answer is that, look, we, there's, there's, there's stuff going on all over the country. We're developing, um, in other parts of the country as well. This may be a little deeper than, than, than you asked, but South Dakota is a friendly state for development. Um, Florida's not. Florida's one of the most regulated states in the U.S. FPL owns a little over fifty percent. I'm an consumer, so I get predictable power. FPL actually has more renewable energy generation than any other company in the world. Their parent company, Exnera, they're active in twenty-eight of fifty states, but it's not, it's not a friendly place for other developers to, um, to develop. South Dakota is, and I think that's one of the reasons why you've got hundreds of megawatts of wind and a couple hundred megawatts of solar. And I think that there's, there's room for more, especially in a county that's anticipating some, some very prominent growth in the next few years.
Okay.
Madam Chair. Just for a point of order, I guess I'd feel more comfortable if we at least put the motion to continue on the floor first before we take our testimony. I believe it helps the people that testify for or against?
Yes.
Uh, these items. Um, Ryan's gonna have another opportunity and several opportunities to speak to us and others, but I think some of these folks may or may not be able to return, so it becomes more official if we, they've addressed the, uh, motion.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
I'd move this, per staff's recommendation, be continued with an open date of, what was it, August twelfth or twenty?
Twelfth or twenty-sixth?
Yes, and that would be appropriate under our guidelines.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, we should ask for the discussion. Can we, I'd like to propose that we ask, redo that, uh, vote on that. Uh, I move we reconsider. In other words, they need to get their opportunity to speak to us before we vote on the motion.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I request that we take a break so I can move my car so I don't get a parking ticket? Sometime before eleven?
Can I?
Oh, sometime before eleven.
Can I request the reconsideration? We'll need somebody that vote at the same second and we'll?
Yeah.
And we'll need somebody that voted for, I guess, besides, do we?
You've got a second.
I think under Roberts' rule, someone that votes for, well, we both voted for it. It went unanimously.
Yeah, we both voted for it.
Or, all right.
So there's a motion and a second.
So now we leave it for the discussion, correct?
Okay. Now we'll have discussion. I have question, I have speaker request forms. Um, if you would just be available to answer questions, some of these may be questions you can answer or they may be questions that staff can answer.
Do you want me to stay here, sit down, or you'd like me to go?
Why don't you sit down, just?
We need to move our cars.
Yeah.
Everybody needs to move their cars? But that's not?
You can declare recess for ten or fifteen minutes without any motion.
Okay, let's recess until five after ten.
But that doesn't happen till eleven. It's only ten.
Yeah.
Don't we get two hours?
Mm-hmm. From the city.
Yeah. We can wait an hour. It's only ten o'clock.
All right.
You can, you can call a recess at eleven and announce it in advance if you'd like. Dude, that's also allowable. You're the chair.
If we still hear it at eleven o'clock, we will take a recess. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I have John Henderson.
Park on the first floor, there's a special place for commissioners to park.
Oh, she didn't give me mine, so.
You'd like to be first. Good morning, commissioners. Um, thank you for your consideration. I had several questions. Some of them have been?
John, you have to introduce it. There's people that can't see.
I'm sorry. My name is John Henderson. I represent Cross Sabers LLC. We own property out in this area. I reside at two four zero four eight South Highway three eighty-five in Hill City. Good? Okay, so, as I said, some of my questions have sort of been answered. One of my, one of my problems with this was the lack of property owner notification. Commissioner Ross Connect addressed that. I find it very inadequate that only two immediate neighbors were notified. Our property is roughly within a half a mile of this project. So that's kind of been addressed, but not adequately in my mind. Okay? The next question I would have is, how is, how is this gonna affect our property values? And I don't know who's able to answer that. Is it gonna change the assessment, assess values? Is it gonna, is it gonna increase our valuations or is it gonna decrease our valuations?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Roth had his hand raised.
So it's an excellent question. It comes up a lot, obviously, and every jurisdiction is different, but once again, I'm pleased to report that if there's any impact on sort of a transformation of what was heretofore agricultural land to renewable energy plants, if anything, the value of properties have crept up a little bit. And I'm not familiar with any cases where there was a, a, a drop in property prices. There might be something unique to this part of the country in South Dakota, but there's a lot of evidence pointing in the other direction and we're happy to provide that to you and to the commission.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you can stay here for this one.
All right. It says, it says that it's a, it's an eleven hundred acre project.
Only three hundred acre, you called it, or included in the quote footprint. I wonder if within that eleven hundred acres that's available, can you expand, add more panels, more turbines, more whatever it is, without having to go through this process again, so that planning and zoning, the county commissioners, the neighbors have a, have a, have an input in it?
So, um, the way I understand the question is, we're asking for permission to build on up to the eleven hundred. The initial design for the hundred and forty-two point eight megawatts only uses the amount that you mentioned, um, but the request is for up to two hundred megawatts. So we're not anticipating doing any more?
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
No, not at all.
So what is the question?
Okay, I don't know about your anticipations. My question is very clear. If you decide to build on more or increase it beyond the three hundred acres that are used, do you have to go through a permitting process again in front of the neighbors, the commissioners, whoever it is?
I don't know. I think that if we wanted to go beyond the eleven hundred, the answer would definitely be us.
So you don't know?
No. We're asking, we're asking to use the eleven hundred. That's what we're asking for. We anticipate using a little less, but we're asking to use the full eleven hundred.
Okay, well, I guess that, I guess that'll answer my questions on that. It's not clear to me what you're saying, but that's my concern. If you go from, okay, we're only using three hundred acres, then you decide you're gonna put in another three hundred acres, do you have to go through a process again to get that permitted?
So I apologize if I wasn't clear. May I have another chance, please?
Yeah, I've got all day to tell them I have to move the car.
Okay. So, um, we, we looked at the interconnection potential and we think we can go up to two hundred megawatts. We designed a plant that is less than that. It's a little less, not a lot less, it's a hundred and forty-two point eight. That requires, based on these preliminary studies, the tract of land, things could change. We could find out, but wait a second, we did a study and it's better to move it a little bit this way, a little bit that way. We think that with eleven hundred, we get a lot of flexibility, but there's an upper ceiling on the amount of land or the size of the land that we'll put anything anywhere and there's an upper ceiling on the amount of power that we would, that we would ask to interconnect to the grid at that substation.
Let me see if I can dumb this question down for you. Do, would you, if you expanded beyond the three hundred acres, would you have to go through some kind of a permitting process again?
Yep. If we're within the eleven hundred acres, no.
Brittany, can Brittany answer this? We just spoke, Brittany's got the answer to this.
Sorry, Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. Right now, their request is for up to two hundred megawatts. So as long as they meet the required setbacks for whatever structures they have, they would be able to do that if that's what the condition in this, um, planning commission approves is up to the two hundred megawatts. Does that answer your question?
And they are currently applying for near one forty-five?
Yes, yes, they could up to two hundred.
Brittany, they are currently applying for near one forty-five, so there's?
There's currently in the design plan, one forty-two. If they wanted to go up to two hundred, they would be able to expand, yes, as long as they meet the setbacks in the order.
So the three, Brittany, the three hundred acres that John's talking about, without a coming back, they can go ahead and expand?
Correct, because the notification and the permit boundaries of it is within the eleven hundred. That's what was part of, what was advertised.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then if that's the case, Commissioner Litten's question about being a massive thing, it, it can be expanded?
Yeah.
Without any more permitting, public opinion, anything?
Not unlimited, John. That's what Brittany just said. To two hundred, if they're covering three hundred acres with a hundred and forty-five, how are you gonna fit much more on the re, eleven is what you, well, I, I asked her to come up there. We have it, they are applying for two hundred. If they got to the two hundred, they have to come back. Or if they get outside of the limit, for instance, the setbacks on the towers are nine hundred feet, they have to come back.
Okay.
So I think you're beating a dead horse with those, is what I'm trying to bring up.
I'm used to that in this room. Um, okay, thank you. John, we don't get personal here, okay? I'm sorry, I apologize to the commission. Okay, um, I guess that's all of my questions. I have one request. I have some reading material that I would like to give to the commission, to the chair perhaps. There are two different books that I've looked at. One is written by Greg Hubner, which is, he's local, is, the title of the book is Paradise Destroyed. The subtitle is The Destruction of Rural Living by the Wind Energy Scam. The second book is the Wind Farm Scam and Ecologist's Evaluation, written by John Etherington. With your permission, I would like to leave this in case any of you want to look at those materials.
I accept it. I'd like to see it and then, but it has to go to Jerry first, John.
Okay. Again, I apologize for any personal things that were said. And I thank the commission for their service. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Next is Jerry Durr.
Hey, good morning, commissioners. Jerry Durr, and I live out in the area where this project is proposed. And I found out through Facebook, actually, when Jerry Mater, I think that's how the majority of us caught it, Jerry Mater, the adjoining landowner, put it out on Facebook and it gets back to the notification process. And I know that everybody is following what's in state statute. And so a couple of things have been mentioned, but getting back to the, the solar plant at New Underwood, yes, that is huge. And I live south of New Underwood and wasn't aware that that solar plant was going in until I saw the construction start, and then asked, what is this? And so they make these projects, they come in, and a lot of the narrative in here, it says farm, and it does begin with, you know, an F, it is a four-letter word, but it's not a farm. It is a plant. And many of these obviously are subsidized with tax dollars to make it useful to the people that are putting it in. It's not a benefit to our community. And so I was on the school board up in New Underwood for two terms, and one thing that New Underwood is looking for is growth in population and getting that students coming in to help support our rural community. And you made, Commissioner Litten, you made an observation that's not going unnoticed by many people that come in when they drive around New Underwood. You can get a look at that solar plant that is up there, that stretches quite a ways, and you really don't get an idea as to the scope of it when you're driving the road until you're elevated to get that look at it. And so that is surrounding, and it's west of where this project is located. And so when you're looking at, you know, at that from the interstate, you're getting a scope, and then think about it if you're in our community and you're looking at not only the use of the property, but you're looking at what the potential growth in New Underwood is and getting populace coming in. And so that growth coming in from the Rapid City is going to be moving east. And one thing that New Underwood has looked for, you know, for decades is a growth in our student population. And so there's been talk about the number of people coming in with Ellsworth, you know, correlating 8,000 people coming into Ellsworth with the, you know, amount of households that could be supported by the project. It's a, you know, it's kind of a, akin to calling it a farm. I'm going to tie the patriotism in with Ellsworth and say, here's a benefit because we're going to support, you know, our military community. And so you get all of these, you know, little buzzwords and stuff coming in, but it's obvious to our community that we don't want this. And it's the bigger picture going back to zoning. And so for, you know, the zoning, which some of us met with Brittany on Thursday to talk about this, and Brittany, thank you for taking the time to meet with Jerry and some of us to talk about this project. And so Jerry Mater finds out in the 13th of July, he puts it out on Facebook, you know, the community becomes aware, he's got a petition here, not really a petition, but just signatures, there should be over 50 to go with the letter that he's got of the individuals that are saying, we're concerned about this project. And so when you get down to the notification and you read everything that's in that documents that were submitted, you know, there was a pre-planning meeting in October of '23 with planning staff. They, you know, was mentioned that they've been working on this for two to three years, and we've had about 10 days to take a look at this. And so when you get back to your motion about, you know, the continuance, I would say, you know, move it to the August 26 meeting to give everybody here time to kind of get up to speed. And again, as these projects go in, they change as well. So that's a lot of documentation to get through. And on Friday, I did speak to the Public Utilities Staff in Puer, and they were unaware of this project. And so the state regulates at 100 megawatts. This is two projects. And so solar, the majority of it coming from solar, the megawatts, and then the wind. But when you put them together, it's 142. So talking to the state on Friday, they too were unaware of this project. And then it was a question is, because it's combining two projects, and I'd like to do with your motion, you put it into one to talk about this as a project instead of two separate items. The state said this would be the first hybrid facility of its type in the state, combining wind and solar into one project, basically. So they sent it off to their legal team to review, and they will notify me what their findings, and I'll share those with Brittany, as to whether or not this is something the PUC has to regulate. But it comes down to something a little bit bigger than whether or not the PUC can regulate it, not unlike, you know, you see what's on the ballot with Senate Bill 201, where local control was taken away, is driven around the pipeline and given to the PUC. I think the local control should be here, which goes back to the zoning ordinance that we have and giving a conditional use permit for energy plants in an agricultural area. So you're talking about, which I think is us looking at our zoning ordinance and whether or not we want to allow a conditional use permit for a solar plant. It's a lot different than putting in something, you know, something that kind of fits, but what we're seeing with the growth that is coming, and again, you know, your question was a great one, is to why not Florida, why South Dakota? It's obviously regulation, but what do we have here that is not in a lot of places? And that is, you know, eastern Pennington County with an open prairie. And so for nearly 150 years, this property out there, the land has been utilized for agricultural purposes and primarily livestock grazing and hay production, et cetera. So when you look at pushing this type of development into an agricultural community, it just doesn't fit. Not unlike the solar plant that is up around New Underwood, and why go east? And obviously, the reason to go east is because we have the open spaces, but we're talking about two individuals, two entities, let's say, that are not invested into our community. And so the property owner, you know, bought the land, he lives in Florida, and the company coming in has stated, you know, for since 2009 up until 2021 has operated in the Caribbean, has not operated in the United States. And so you're looking at coming into an area where you can utilize the lack of regulation, maybe some flaws, which I believe we have a flaw now that I've looked at it in our zoning ordinance that needs to be addressed related to allowing this to happen. But, you know, we are friendly that way. And when you talk about the tax revenue, the question was asked, you know, what's going to happen to the property value? I believe he stated some property values increase. Okay. That's not a good thing because the county's levy is laid against that assessed value to create that taxing dollar coming back. So inflating, you know, land use, but, you know, talking about what it's going to do to property values, and then everybody says collecting more taxes is a good thing, and it's not. Pardon?
Madam Chair, point order.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
So, but anyway, you know, with property taxes going up, so, you know, everybody says we can collect more tax dollars, or that's more tax money coming in. Tax money coming into the government is typically, that's just another dollar that we're going to spend. And so it's not really a benefit, it's just spending more money. Collecting more money, spend more money. And anyway, those are just some of my comments about pushing this back to give the community some time to respond. I think the bigger picture that we need to look at is getting back to looking at the zoning that we have right now and looking at this ability to even get a conditional use permit that is so out far the scope of what our rural community wants and what the land use is for. And the other aspect of it, when it goes in front of the commission, but, you know, they talk about the scope of the project and going, and when you look on a map and you look at some of the terrain and you say, what is it going to cause to improve, not unlike what it's going to cause to, you know, tear this thing down and get it out of our community. But it comes back to improvement of section lines. I think Jerry Mater's going to speak to that, that, you know, you improve a section line in a rural area like that, you put the truck traffic in, you do that, it changes the use of your own property. Some of those section lines are splitting ranches, and you go in and improve that section line and open it up, and it changes really what that land use has been for over 100 years. And so, you know, it's just like the solar plant going in, it increased the traffic with the work camp that was up there just south of New Underwood. And during that timeframe, on more than one occasion, my property is right on 160th Avenue, about half a mile or so north of Highway 44. At the entrance of our driveway, for several months off and on, then we would find used needle and drug paraphernalia sitting at the end of our driveway. I'm fortunate to have my children live on my property with my grandchildren, and you go out to hit the gate, and there's used needles and drug paraphernalia sitting there. So it's not only about the use of the property, it's about people coming into our community, and it's just changing the use and the way of life that we have that's been that way for 150 years. So, thank you.
Other questions?
Jerry, just to clarify one thing, we're only allowed under our motion to put them together for discussion, in other words. So we don't, you don't have to say yours spiel twice, we don't have to say ours or ask her.
No, I understand that, that's a good point, but that's...
We have to consider it individually.
Right. And what I'm saying is, the state is looking at it because it's two separate projects and that combined output. That's why they're looking at it, because they don't know, because they've not seen this, as to whether or not it's something that the PUC would regulate. But I understand why you did it, and it's a very good point.
And then my second one was, and maybe I'm looking at this wrong, but when we talk property values, they will be, agriculture is a category itself, and they won't fall under the agriculture anymore. As far as raising somebody's agricultural price, I don't see a relation, but maybe I'm missing that.
No, but when you talk about land values going up, it's an educational thing with the public, because as soon as you talk about increased land values, they don't think, increased property values, you know, a lot of the people, when they hear that, they don't think about the different classifications between ag and non-ag and owner-occupied, residential, that type of thing.
I see more money going to the school district.
Correct. But just because it can increase somebody else's personal land value doesn't always mean that's a benefit.
Okay. I understand what your statement was. Thank you.
Michael.
You're on the school board. Do you have any idea with the existing solar one that's north of this one, what it brings in for taxes? What it increases, do you know?
No, I don't know. And I'm not on the school board anymore, I was for two terms years ago. And there was a question as to whether or not, I think, you know, the kind of coming into a community, the company with the solar plant, because I asked those questions, was, you know, the benefit coming in, well, they're going to give, you know, a certain amount of a payment to the school district. And so to win people over, I mean, you kick money around at the onset and say, if you don't oppose this, you know, we're going to give you 10,000, 20,000 annually, whatever that number is. I can tell you for what the value would be on residential building coming in and what that property tax dollar would look like, then it's, you know, that's chicken feed compared to what the solar plant would be giving them. So it's just, and you know, and if you haven't, I would encourage, if you haven't, to go up and look at the scope of that, you know, solar plant abiding in Wonderwood, and just think about not only that solar plant, but, you know, the wind towers going up. And the other thing that I asked the planning department was, you know, at the onset, you can look at all the, you know, you can look at all the GIS maps, you can look at Google Earth, you can look at all this stuff. Has anybody from the county gotten out to do a site survey on this potential project? And the answer was no. And that would be one of the things that we would ask for.
Thank you. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I ask a question? I'm a little confused because the existing facility, where is this proposed project located in relation to the existing one? I've heard north, I've heard east, I've heard west.
It's 160 Avenue, so at Farmingdale, 160 Avenue goes north, turns into 161 to go to New Underwood. This is going to be on the east side.
Okay, so the...
And east of that location, New Underwood is northwest.
So this, the project now is going to be east of the existing one? And then somebody said north, so I'm confused.
South.
South.
South and east.
South and east.
New Underwood is north and east, where the solar plant is at, or north and west. So it's northwest is the solar plant, southeast is this location.
Is this site.
Yes.
All right. Florence Thompson.
I'm Florence Thompson, I live at Caputa, South Dakota. I'm a small-time rancher. I thank you for listening to us this morning. I hope you appreciate how much of a sacrifice it is for these people to leave their ranches and their farms and come in and talk about this. I had to leave chores undone. I'm going to end up paying a $15 parking fine and I'll trip down to the city hall to pay it. So, and these other people have left a lot more important things behind, so I appreciate you listening to us. It's very disappointing to come into a meeting and say, well, you don't have to come to this meeting, you can come to a later meeting. So thank you for listening to us today. I represent South Dakota Citizens for Liberty, and we are opposed to this project. South Dakota is not for sale. We've heard this slogan, and I wish it were true. Unfortunately, South Dakota is for sale. It's being bought out frequently. This project, we're opposed to because of its aesthetic, its environmental factors, the risk involved. The cleanup for these things is not simple. The recycling for the wind machines is not simple. Those things right now have to be buried, they haven't found any way to recycle them at all. And by transporting these over our roads and interstates, it's quite inconvenient because of the huge size of them. I've been in places where, you know, the traffic was blocked for a long time so that a solar panel could, or pillar, I guess, a propeller, could go around an exit. And so it's very difficult. These are not small things. Also, I think the liability that the county is getting into with all of these things, we already have the largest solar farm and solar plant in South Dakota. That's the one south of New Underwood, which I've seen a lot. We already have that. Why do we need another one? Okay? Other than for somebody to make money on their investment, buying a big ranch and then turning it into government, farming the government, basically, for their payments. Also, I think you should consider the possibility of sabotage with all of these things. The more you string out your supply lines with transmission lines that go clear across the country, you know, this is the national grid. The more you string this out, the more vulnerability there is. So we should have our power transmission near the places that use the power, not out here in the boonies where it's going to go to the metropolitan areas. Also, I think you need to consider that we do, you know, the political situation can't be predicted, but on the other hand, I think prudence is involved. With a new, if there is a new administration nationally, a lot of these green energy programs are going to get the ax. If there is not, then it's maybe, as long as they have, as long as the money system doesn't totally collapse, they'll keep subsidizing these projects. But these are subsidized projects. They don't pay for themselves. So it enables an investor who bought land to use that land to suck up subsidies from the federal government. And so, you know, I don't, I think Pennington County already has enough investment in this type of technology. I think you'd be wise to wait, see how the dust settles after this election and the new administration comes in, see what happens, rather than going ahead with this at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions for Florence? Betty Kaneski.
I'll try to keep this brief. Seth Shorb is my, excuse me, grandson, and he can be here today because of the short notice.
Please introduce yourself.
Betty Kaneski. I am adjacent to the Lemley Ranch, but they refer to it as a Cheyenne River Ranch. I've lived there since '73. And Seth received notice on Saturday, the 13th, a registered letter, and the post office was already closed, so he never got his letter until Monday, the 15th. And in the legal notice in the paper, they say that this project is, that he refused my grandson's physical address to say that it is northeast of there. Well, it is also straight north of the property that they own on 44. And I have concerns, they say that there's no houses close, except the ranch house, and my house is closer to this project than the ranch house, and I'm sure Buzzy Johnson's house is going to be very visible from there, and he's off the baselane road. And we have concerns about what it's going to do to the ranching. We have no idea what effect their wind turbines are going to have on our cattle. We're, and why someone from Florida could come in and buy up the ranch, as a lady said. And we get, as they said, we get hail, we get terrible blizzards. And I'm just concerned, especially if they do open the section line, they have to go north from where this project is, and then this project is on the north side of the ranch. And I have concerns, and I'm sure a lot of our friends and neighbors are here concerned too, so I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Jerry Mater?
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Jerry Mater, I'm a neighboring rancher, and we border this potential or proposed site for about a mile and a half. And we've lived there for about 40 years, my wife and I, Bella. And I guess we have some concerns. And one of the main concerns, when this proposal first came out, is they were going to cross our land with the road coming in from the north, which is shorter to New Underwood. But I guess now they sound like they're going to come up from the south on their own deeded property, which is, of course, quite a bit better for us. So I just want to make sure that they don't cross Ray Canupi's land and our land, and Doyle Ranch is in too. And I guess the other thing too, as Betty alluded to, we only got the notice on July 13th, and of course, this hearing is today, so I'm glad to hear that it sounds like it may be continued. And I guess that's all I have for now, and that'll give us a little more time to do some research and come up with some maybe more formidable questions. So I thank you for your time. Any questions, I guess?
Are there any questions for Mr. Mater? Are there any questions for Mr. Mater?
All right, thank you.
Justin Urick.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just had a few questions at this point. I think a lot of the other people have already spoke or asked some questions, but Mr. Lyon, if you wouldn't mind joining me up here just so you can answer for them. I did read through your packet of material, and you guys do have a very nicely laid out project here.
Thank you.
I guess one question, I would like to come back to the transmission line. So is the intent to go up to the substation that is at New Underwood now to tie in with your transmission lines from this project? Or where, are you planning on going directly west to the WAPA line and then creating a new substation to tie in? Or what, what is the, I guess, you have to plan at this point, to clarify that a little bit more?
That's a great question. I believe with less than 100% certainty, because I'm not, Mark was supposed to be here, and he was going to answer most of the technical questions, I believe it's the former. I believe that we're not building a new substation, but we're going to interconnect, which is one of the reasons why we're kind of capped at a, at a certain number. So the, the existing WAPA substation.
Okay. So, so then that's approximately, I believe, about 10 miles. Do you know, eight to 10 miles north of your project is where the substation is? Do you know what the route of that will be? Will you be using eminent domain to lay a new line, or how will they be running that, that line?
So I don't know, but what I'd like to do is I'd like to come back, it sounds like probably the 26th, and get you answers to both questions. Which of the substations specifically we plan to interconnect at? And what, if any, I don't believe there'll be any eminent domain, but to the extent that there has to be some sort of easement, I think is the word that we would be looking for, to get an easement through, because we don't own, I don't think it's quite eight to 10, but it's probably, I think it was 7.2 kilometers, about four and a half miles is what I saw. So we would, we would be asking for easements over that property to get to the substation.
Do you mind if I pull my phone up here just to look at distance?
Sure. I'll, I'll accept whatever answer you come up with, my thing, so.
Well, you're, so, so you're saying that you guys don't own, you're saying Cheyenne River Ranch LLC does not own that full length of that? Is that what you mean by you guys do not own?
I believe we're going to be asking for an easement.
Okay. So their, their proposed property, where their place in this is in the northwest corner of Cheyenne River Ranch, beyond your 1,000-foot setback, you guys don't own any more ground. So everything beyond that's going to either have to go in a road right of way, or it's going to have to be in an easement across adjoining landowners, not just on your guys' property, if that's clear.
I believe that's correct.
Okay. So the majority of it will be on other landowners or in road right of ways, impactful to the others, which is important to us, if you understand that.
Of course.
Okay. So in here, coming back to, you were talking about-
Justin?
Yes, sir.
Are you recording this, did you say?
No, I, I asked him if I could pull up my phone, pull up a map to show distances.
I was going to say, because under Robert's rules, we've got one recording system on there.
No, sir, I'm not recording it.
Florence is recording.
Okay.
Yeah, people can do what they want as far as pictures and whatnot.
I'm a map person, so I like to look at things on maps, and it helps demonstrate things very well.
We were going to try to get you a rapid map up here too, so you can show a little bit more where you're talking about.
And there are a number of homes that are closer. Granted, this is not a highly residential area, but there are many homes that are closer than the landowner's home. His is approximately five point more, five point four miles away. He will not be able to see it from that. I'm going to call it a vacation home because he does not reside on this place from the vacation home on his property or their property. As far as the costs that you're going to get back off, off of resale of the materials that are left over, I, I guess I have a little bit of question. Fiber glass, is that recycled a lot right now for like the wind turbines?
Not, not a lot, no.
I think a lot of our areas familiar with Cheyenne, or excuse me, Casper landfill that is filled up with a lot of wind turbines in the last years, it's made some pretty big headlines locally. And so I'm, I'm wondering if you're using current estimated recycling costs, I, I'm assuming that you're going to have to dispose of a lot of those turbine blades somewhere, probably.
Look, these are all excellent questions, but as I said earlier, we can only sort of work on the science and the technology that exists in 2024. Obviously, the, you know, deployment of all these materials 35 years in the future is going to be a little different than it is right now.
Sure. Sorry, I'm trying to reorient my mind a little bit. The, why, why two permits? Why can't they go, both go under one? Is it because solar is on DC and wind is not? Why, why didn't you just apply for all this under one permit if it's just one? Because you're applying for the solar under one and the wind generation under another?
I think, Brittany can answer.
I can answer that. Sorry. Brittany Moller, Planning Director. Our ordinance is a separate requirements, and they have separate standards on which they have to be reviewed under, and there's different setbacks for the different types and heights and things that are allowed, that's why.
So, so solar is 100-foot setback, is that correct?
Well, they're 100-foot setback, and then the wind is like 1.3 the tower height, I believe.
1.3 a tower height is how far they have to be setback?
Well, right now, they're proposing 900.
900 feet. And so the solar systems, it will look like come within 100 foot of the property boundaries, I believe, on the maps that we're within here. And then the, the wind turbines are approximately 1,000 foot back, so they are setback, but they're not, the entire property is going to be 1,000 feet back from their property boundary, from my understanding and looking at the maps. One other question in here, and I wasn't sure, you said that a lot of the, the values were based on southeast cost, so I think that gets, I think Commissioner Johnson was getting at some of that. A lot of these costs in here are based on southeast estimates, so yes, I would agree that.
Yeah, I already made a point to get you on the research for you, that's an excellent point. And, and we're looking at this as one comprehensive project. One of your colleagues asked a question earlier about the scope and size. So, you know, we have been looking at this for a couple of years, but we're still pretty much in the early innings, and there's more research to be done, so the configuration might be tweaked a little bit. But as you can see, as you're flipping through it, there has been some intellectual property already deployed into making sure that we, you know, at least dotted most of our eyes and crossed most of our teams. But I appreciate the feedback a lot.
The, I, I won't flip to it, I was trying to find it, but it referenced in here somehow when I was talking about the costs that are going to come back, basically in the reclamation project. I think each one was about 5 million, if I'm not incorrect. I know I'm estimating a little bit. It said something about Rivian Wind Project, I don't know if somebody else caught that. Is that what the wind turbine project's going to be named, or is that another project altogether?
That's a different project.
Was that just accidentally copied into this report from a different project, then?
I think that's probably the salvage value that was presumed in that project.
Okay, okay. Okay, I, I read through that and-
It was a reference point in order to give us some sort of, but I think Commissioner Johnson made a good point, because maybe those values assume transportation and sort of checking all the boxes. And if we, if our costs are higher than the bond that Commissioner Lewis referred to will, will be, will be more significant as well. We're not, I mean, again, I, I recognize the goodwill and community concerns, and I think there are some lessons to be learned in terms of, I'm glad that we're going to have another chance to visit with all, all of you in over a month, but, but I want to take back all your feedback and make sure that we, that we're responsive to these good questions.
Thank you. Thank you for coming up. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Questions for Justin? No? Those are the speaker request forms I have from the audience. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Commission, any other comments, questions?
Yeah. No.
Madam Chair, could we get the State's Attorney's Office up here? We got a representation from the State's Attorney.
Tyler Sobezak, Pennington County State Attorney's Office.
Okay, so to me, I see a lack of transparency. With that being said, you can see the public interest out here. So where's our, if the planning commissioner, the commission decided to deny this, where's our liability?
Well, that's a loaded question, I think, and I think it certainly need a more thorough investigation than we're prepared to provide for today. Granted that things are going to be put, presumably pushed out to the 26th, I would just request some time to research that issue, talk to the SD, you know, the insurance carrier, and we can revisit that at the 26th, perhaps an executive session as well, however you want to see fit, but that's a big tall ask for where we're sitting at today.
I just want that awareness out there, that, you know, there's guidelines that we got to follow, and there's pros and cons to this, and hopefully something will get worked out. But just why these folks are here, they can't probably come to every meeting, so I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Understood, understood.
Other questions from the board?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I see we have someone here from Equalization. Did you have something that you could share about taxes?
Joe Doran with the Department of Equalization. So I'm a little, I just came down here quickly. I work primarily with tax exemptions for solar or wind or geothermal for residential properties primarily. I'm not sure how the exemption applies to a power company or something like that. As far as any solar panels being put on a house, the value of the solar panels are, and the installation are then added to the assessment, and then they get the exemption for the same amount. So in that case, it's a wash. Geothermal is allowed for five years, I believe, and there's a reduction in the amount of the exemption for the geothermal. As far as wind, I'm not 100%.
Okay. So what department at the state makes that decision about how these will be taxed? Department of Revenue?
Department of Revenue, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Joe?
Since we're going to back this off a couple of weeks anyhow, is there any way you could find out some of this information, or is this not something that you were cool with?
I can answer some questions if I knew what they were. Yes.
Well, of course, the biggest thing, what, what people want to know at this point is, you know, how much tax value is going to come out of this?
How much?
Yeah, in other words, what's, what are they going to make on this thing? What's the school system going to get?
And I can direct that to the director as well. He's not in the office this week.
Mike, isn't it more how the, the land is going to be categorized for taxation?
Well, that, true, but, but for example, with, with the gentleman who's talking for this, the school system, you know, how much are these different entities going to make off of this thing?
Okay.
I, I mean, that, I don't care how they show it, but somebody, yeah, somebody's making some money on taxes on this thing. That, that was my only question, how will you find out? It's easy to say that it's going to have taxable value, but what is the taxable?
I would support your idea, follow up for the next meeting.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why I was wondering if he could do that.
Yeah. Myself or the director would be able to give you better answers.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. There was another gentleman that, please introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Joe Koeman.
Pardon? What was your?
Joe Koeman. I live in close proximity to this place. To answer your question about the school, they have received, received zero money. And as far as, how come you don't know already? That one's been operational for how long already? You don't know how much tax money it's been?
This is an operational.
I don't collect the taxes. We just do the assessed value.
Yeah.
The taxes and collection is through the auditor's office and the treasurer's office.
Yeah. And these, this other company has.
Joe, could I answer that? We got notified or approved, I think it was '23 was their dates of their, it's for coming taxes, I would think.
Okay.
Yeah. I think they're, it may have been out there building for two years, but it never was put in, commissioned, or whatever they call it.
And you're right, I don't, I don't think it's operational until maybe May of this year even, totally, you know.
And I don't know whether anything's coming or not. I'm just saying, I think date-wise, it's a tax thing, just like your land taxes are.
Yep, right.
A year behind.
And, right. Of course, I have two kids in the New Underwood School District, you know, other company had an assembly one day, and, you know, they were supposed to get all this money, you know, but, you know, called it a school board, they have not received a dime yet, so, yeah. So I just, it's, it's not all good, so. And I got a question, how come Florida doesn't? You know, it's hard regulations, I wonder why that is? Why is that? Yeah, I mean, why, how come they don't, you said it's hard to get these going in Florida, why is that?
So Florida has an enormous amount of renewable energy, mostly solar, but it's all owned by the power companies, by the utilities. So a couple of states are completely regulated, like Florida, very few of them, maybe five or six still. Some are semi-regulated, and some are unregulated. So, you know, California famously has probably hundreds of solar developers, if not more.
Right.
South Dakota is partially regulated, so we're working obviously very closely with the RTO. There is an RTO, there are actually two RTOs here, but this part of the state, it's SWPP. So, you know, ask the folks in Tallahassee who've decided to enable the sort of oligopoly of utilities in the state of Florida to control all of the renewable power generation.
There's a lot, it's not, they're not privately owned like-
That's exactly right. That's exactly, that's right.
Sir, if you think we need more regulation in South Dakota, I suggest you talk to your legislators.
I will, I will, I will. So that's why we vote them in, you know, yeah.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have another point, but I, I will wait till the next meeting, Matt. So thank you guys for your time. All right.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion? We have a motion on the floor. Is there discussion among the Commissioners? We have a motion to-
Have we pinned down a date now, then, to the?
We should pin down a date, I would think, so these folks know, and so Mr. Roth knows.
Madam Chair, are we going to vote on these separately?
Yes.
Yes. Seen an item, okay.
Yes. Planning, what's your preference?
Brian, have you dealt with, had an opportunity to deal with Brittany on the, the date?
So initially, we, we talked about the 12th and 26th. One of the gentlemen here felt that longer would be better, so I would say no earlier than the 26th. I need to check my schedule and Mark's schedule, but if not August 26th, then I would suggest one of the meetings in September. We just want to make sure we get this right. We're not in a hurry to do things sooner than, or faster than they should take. And I think that'll give folks a chance to research some of the open questions.
Yes.
So if, if the 26th works for the commission and works for Brittany and Jason, then I, I just need to check my own schedule and Mark's. But if you can give us till the end of the day, unless you, you want to put it on now, I would say put the 26th, and then I would, I would confer with-
I amend my motion to include the date of the 26th, then, and if the second goes along with it. And the reason I do that is because we do have the right to continue to the following week, if, if you should not be able to make it. But it puts a requirement under the same thing that causes us a problem. She has notification requirements to our citizens and to the general population. So, and usually, I believe the, the rules say we can't just stick it out there forever, we've got to have a date pinned down.
Let's keep the 26th then.
Okay.
26th.
If that's acceptable to you, I can have no problem. I will amend my motion, I don't know who the second was.
At least one of us will be here.
Ross Connect. Who? Ross Connect. Oh, Ross Connect, second evidence, is that okay with you?
Yep.
The 26th, okay. So we will continue till the 26th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Onto the next item.
Now we have to go on to item number 14.
Yes, item 14. This is, as you recall, we combine these for discussion purposes, so we'll just need to make the motion to continue.
I move that item number 14 be continued to August 26th per staff's recommendation.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay.
And I hope everybody doesn't have to run for their car, because you can't get out of the ticket, you're right, you folks are right.
It's 10 to-
I paid them.
It's 10 to 11, so that's when I got here.
They have a contract with the city, in all fairness to the Commissioners, who we've got one sitting here, and it's a zero tolerance. You don't get off of it. They made a contract, the city said, we're going to collect it one way or the other, you can't tell us no. And they've paid some. I'm sure Commissioners have paid some, so. You can't tell us no, and they've paid some. I'm sure Commissioners have paid some, so it's a good deal and it's a bad deal. What are you going to do?
Let's, Commissioner Litsom needs to move her car. Let's take a 10-minute break and come back at 11 o'clock. We only have a few items left. Next item is executive session. I'm assuming we don't have one today? No? Okay. County Board Report.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, the County Board Report. Is the Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation from the, it should be July 8th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting?
Thank you. Items from the public? Looks like we only have one member of the public left, so. Items from staff? Items from the membership?
Madam Chair, I apologize. I will have a parking permit by next meeting.
I was going to ask if you didn't have one, so.
Jerry said she'd get me one, so sorry about that.
All right, the last thing on our list is adjournment. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Discussion, anyone? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?